To a call to order, the Bristol-Virginia City Council meeting for September 25th, 2018. At this time, let's remember those that went through the hurricane this past week. I think we would need to do that as a moment of silence. A number of people have lost their homes. They've lost everything. I saw it firsthand. It's devastating. You don't realize it till you see it. It's unbelievable. So let's remember them. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Randy, you got the floor?
Counsel, in April, at a meeting at the Virginia Highlands Community College, the mayor approached me and advised me to contact an individual that had a business idea that would locate in the city of Bristol. Since April, we have worked with a group named Par Ventures extensively in order to help facilitate the approval of the manufacturing process of CBD oil in Bristol, Virginia. A few moments ago, the Board of Pharmacy granted that application to Dharma Pharmaceuticals, and they will be moving forward shortly to get that process started here in Bristol, Virginia. I want to say, though, a lot of different people made this happen. First and foremost, the Par Ventures group, they put more time and effort into it in a very short period of time to make it happen than anyone could thought imaginable. I will say that Rick Belcher, Gene Christian, and Bart Poe, they put together a very nice video that we sent to the Board of Pharmacy to show the city's support. And this morning, I was in Richmond speaking on behalf of Dharma Pharmaceuticals and the city at the Board of Pharmacy to support that application. And everything worked out. Things are going in the right direction.
Good deal.
Very good.
Maybe we should just adjourn and go home. Yeah, leave on a good note.
Yeah.
All right, Rhythm and Roots just wrapped up a big three-day weekend of music, and I think everybody enjoyed themselves. I know that, I can tell that a lot of work went into both the setup and the cleanup from the city and public works departments. I saw the pictures before, and I saw the pictures after. I was kind of on vacation, but when you look at the after pictures of how it looked post Sunday, I was like, wow, they must have spent all night cleaning up. So I know there was a lot of hours put in, so thanks to all the city workers for that. That event seems to get better every year, and it's because of the city employees that helped support it. Looking to update the city on our quarterly financials, so I know the CFO is busy trying to get September and some data pulled together, so hopefully in a month or two, we'll see how the city's doing financially in the first three months of the year. And then the marketing video that the city manager's putting together, we're getting closer to being able to show that to everyone. So with that said, any other council comments?
I would just reiterate what you said. I was down here Monday morning, and I went down State Street, and you would not know that there was tens of thousands of people here over the weekend. They did a fantastic job. And I don't know how late they stayed, but I appreciate the efforts of both cities' workers setting things up and tearing it down, so they did good.
All right, before we take up matters to be presented non-agenda items, I think we want to make sure we have the agenda understood by everybody before we get too far into it. So there's three items that we were looking to table on the agenda.
Make a motion that we table items number six, which is consider approval agreement between the city of Bristol, Virginia and Igo Technology. Item number seven, consider approval of Tobacco Region Opportunity Fund Agreement for Project Key Debt 8199. And item number nine, which is consider a closed session for unannounced business prospect.
I second that.
We got a motion, Mr. Hartley, to table items six, seven, and nine, and a second by Mr. Osborne. Please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, with that, we'll move into matters to be presented by members of the public non-agenda. First person is David Meadows.
Mayor, Council, how are you folks today?
Great.
I'm a Washington County, Virginia resident. I don't live in the city of Bristol, which has a median thing because Bristol's my home. Southwest Virginia, northeast Tennessee is my home. You see that they're wanting to place a casino in the city of Bristol? I'm all for it. The manufacturing area's been decimated. The area needs jobs. It needs revenue. I think it'll really, really help increase the accountability and profitability of the area. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person, Nancy Marnie.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I am a property owner. I do pay my taxes, and I do vote, and I take the city's business very seriously. With regard to the casino, only to the casino, it is against the law of the state of Virginia to have a casino within the boundaries of the state of Virginia. I support the state of Virginia. In addition, I also support the Bristol-Virginia Police Department, the Bristol-Virginia Fire Department, and Bristol-Virginia Public Works Department. These three departments always bear the brunt. They are often overwhelmed, and this is one of those times, they are overwhelmed with their duties. I support them without reservation.
Thank you. All right, next person is Jackie Knopf, Reverend.
Mr. Mayor, to the councilmen, Mr. Osborne, to all of you, and to you as well, sir. I'm here on behalf of the school. I know that the decision will come here eventually. My concern was, how is it going to affect the community and the small businesses? Once, say for Stonewall, for instance, if Stonewall is closed, what about the small businesses around? I asked a question last night. What about the businesses? And I was responded to, what businesses? So I'm going to ask you, are there any businesses around Stonewall School? Are there any businesses on Euclid Avenue? I had a, and I know that we did, some people need to get out more. I am heartfelt for uprooting 1,100 students and busting them up to Van Pelt. I know we have to do something. I know something has to be done. But the low-income are going to be the ones that get the run of it. They're going to be the ones that suffer, the low-income. And the whole area is going to be bust up to a higher range of living in a whole different area. I was told last night, 16, maybe 20 buses back and forth every day, and Van Pelt's open year-round. It's so much in detail. So quickly, I made the suggestion, why don't we combine two schools there? The worst school is Highland View. We all know that. It's old, it's the oldest. We know we need to do something. Can we not do everything we can to consider leaving one school in that area so parents will be able to get their little kids to school? Thank you for this.
Thank you. All right, that's everybody's, well, I think there's one other person. It looked like he was scratched out. Ronnie Mathis? I'm sorry, I may have overlooked that one. It looked like it was slined out, but go ahead.
My name is Ronnie Mathis. I am a homeowner in Bristol City, 1617 Overhill Road. I'm also a small business owner here in the area. I'm a president-owner of Wycom Mobile, 80 Terrace Drive. Just wanted to just say and just reiterate how pro I am for the casino here in the area. I think it's a very progressive move and a great thing that could possibly come to help this area out. We are definitely struggling for jobs here in the area. The reason I want to talk about that just a little bit, just for one quick second, is my small business, we had to do a dramatic change. I had a storefront. It was a mom-and-pop store. Last time I was here, people were like, I'd like to see people put money into mom-and-pop stores. I had one. We closed the door because we weren't getting enough traffic in. I went to e-commerce. E-commerce means selling things on the internet. Well, you know, we still, we do quite well with that. However, I would have liked to have kept my storefront for people that have those sorts of needs. I will say this, I'm sure I'm not going to be one of the only ones to say this, but when this does happen and get approved, I am going to do my best to be one of the first people to have a storefront in the new casino location. I'm going to do everything I can to get a lease with Par Venture and the Casino Group. Anyways, I know that wasn't on the agenda. Thanks for taking a few minutes to listen to me, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Did you want to have the Par Venture folks say anything before we get into the agenda?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll move right into the regular agenda. Item one, receive update on school construction project.
Mr. Mayor, honorable members of city council, because I've been known to speak too long, I'm reading from a script tonight so that I don't overextend my welcome. I'm here to briefly update you on the PPA process to build a new elementary school. As you know, city council has issued several challenges and assignments to the school board throughout the process, and I'm happy to report we have met every challenge to date except one. That is the question about the impact this could have on our bond rating as a city, and we are waiting to hear an answer to that question, and that is being facilitated by Davenport, which is the city's financial advisors. So here's a quick summary of the challenges that this council has set forth to our school board. Number one, explore all options. You know, since 2011, we have tossed around many, many ideas of what we could do, looked at different properties, and, you know, we believe that even though it's not in the best ideal location, that we have chosen the best option to move forward with the new elementary school. We've evaluated, we visited 13 sites, but we actually evaluated even more. And Van Pelt is the only site that is big enough, affordable, and available for us to build on. No better solution has been suggested despite a plethora of public involvement and input. We also hired a well-respected architectural firm out of Richmond to estimate pricing of various scenarios to conduct renovations that have been discussed over the years, which does include closing Highland View and renovating remaining schools. We've also been challenged to think big. This is certainly a big idea. We would be the first school division in the Commonwealth to use this mechanism of financing and PPA to build a new elementary school. We've been told to think long-term. There's nothing that is more important to our future than providing a high-quality and equitable education to our students, and so this is also, has a long-term financial benefit. We also have been asked to provide a financing plan that will not affect the city debt limit. The initial response from Davenport, which is our financial advisor, says that this lease structure will not count towards the city's debt margin. The city financial advisors are also seeking input from rating agencies to see if it will have any impact on the bond rating. An attorney general ruling has also been requested, and we've also already requested an opinion from the auditor of public accounts, and they have notified us that they will not provide a positive or negative response that is not in their area of expertise. We've also been told to be transparent. We've had so far six public hearings leading up to consolidation and site selection, and now we're getting recommendations for changes to the site plan and to the floor plan. Some of those things included a new access road that's been added. Multiple floor plan adjustments have been made. We've been asked what it would cost to add a turn lane from Suncrest on the bottom. We have that information. Most recently, we've been asked what it would cost to add a turn lane from Bonham on the Suncrest. We have that information. We've been asked to provide the cost to completely demolish Highland View Elementary School, which is certainly something that needs to be considered due to its current conditions. We have that estimate. And we've also had an open-door policy. There's folks in this room that will tell you that I have been more than open, not only in public hearings and in public meetings, but at Kiwanis, Lions Clubs, TIP Clubs, all over the community, football games, and in my office. We have been more than open and transparent with this process. You've also asked us to come up with things that we could do with the buildings. We issued a request for information for that. We have received bids, not bids, we have received responses to that request for information, which you are in possession of. You also, first challenge is to have a budget-neutral proposition. That changed to a budget-positive proposition. We currently have a budget-neutral proposition in front of you, and if any of those properties are sold, that will, it will become immediately a budget-positive proposition. This proposal has no need for the city to increase taxes, and there's no request from the city to do anything but to provide level funding based on our 2017-18 local appropriation and to approve us to enter into a comprehensive plan. The city will not be on the hook or not be obligated to pay this lease. So that is a very quick summary. I'm here with you tonight because we would like to invite city council to have a couple or more work sessions with us before you take a final vote in November, but also to get one, hopefully, one last set of assignments that you may have from me so that I can answer any questions that city council may have before you vote for this school in November.
I got a couple of questions, I don't know if any council members do, but the bond rating and the attorney general opinion, do you have an estimated date?
We anticipate, and this is from Davenport, that the bond rating question will be answered in the very near future. I will defer answering the attorney general's question, the question about the attorney general, because I've left that to Mr. Eats. He has a better contact there.
So I pretty much in an email told Randy that we don't need to have any formal meetings in city council until we have those two items answered, because those two are really important to us. And then the funds, if the PPA, which, you know, everybody says it's budget-neutral, what that means is the budgets we've had up to now, what the city has given the school system, basically the lease or the rent with all the consolidation cost savings would hold the budget neutral, in other words, at the same level.
Yes, sir, and those are very conservative estimates by everybody's calculation.
And so would your own decision change if the city had funds available? If we had the means to build a new school, would your approach or decision be different?
Certainly. We have followed this approach because the city does not currently have that capacity. One of the things that we presented in these two public hearings that we have is to not move now certainly is understandable considering those considerations, but the opportunity costs are enormous to put that proposal off for a year, even for just one year.
Can you enlighten, you don't have to do it now, but at some point, can you enlighten us on what your approach would be if funds were available?
Absolutely. Absolutely. If funds were available, we would have the opportunity to purchase additional, different properties. Currently, we don't have the potential to do that. Now, there would only, I think, at this time, only be one other potential site that we could consider of the 13 that we looked at. We narrowed it down to five.
And which site would be the one you'd want to purchase if you had money today?
Well, from a negotiation standpoint, we probably shouldn't talk about that.
But you have one selected?
Not selected, but we would have one that we can narrow it down to.
All right. Do you have, you say you have numbers on the turn lanes that have been proposed?
Yes.
So we'll have a consolidated, pretty precise number with a review by city engineering?
It's actually provided by your, is provided by your city engineer.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
I do have one thing, and this is less from a financial standpoint, more from a human impact standpoint. And I've heard it from, and I think we've discussed a little bit, I've heard it from several different people who've talked to me about it. The effect that some of these kids at Washington Lee and Highland View, you know, have traumatic life experiences that, you know, affects their schooling, and, you know, they get extra help at the schools, they get extra attention. And just, is there any kind of numbers you can provide on how that'll be affected if they move to the other school, and, you know, it's a bigger environment, so will they still get that same type of one-on-one extra attention?
Sure, absolutely. So a lot of our extra help comes from outside agencies, and a majority of that outside help is funded through the Medicaid program. And so we currently have day treatment counselors, for example, in all of our schools. They have a caseload of five students total, and those five students would, if they're in Washington Lee, those students would also be at the new elementary school. And so the funding follows the students, so regardless of their location, day treatment counselors, for example, would be available. One thing that we're really excited about that we're working on, also with Ballot Health and with Highlands Community Services, is having behavioral therapists in our schools. Currently, many of our students have to leave school, many of our students have to leave school throughout the course of the week to go to Abingdon and receive behavioral therapy services. We're working to put a behavioral therapist in our school, number one, so that they can help students immediately when they need that help, but also to help assist in some of the transportation issues that we're currently dealing with already, and that have been mentioned as part of one of the concerns for, you know, moving the school out of the central, the community locations.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Couple of things, and one, I think I've mentioned to you already, Dr. Purgen, but I would like to see, because I know, I think you said that you could prepay some of this, or if the city does find itself in a position, I like, and I assume it's just a straight amortization, but I'd like to see an amortization chart, preferably not a PDF, but an Excel document, so we can change amounts and particularly interest rates to kind of look at some different scenarios. I know in your presentation, you offered some different scenarios there. I'd like to be able to calculate some of that out if possible.
We have asked for that amortization table, and we are waiting, we're waiting to receive that. We know that the payment currently is 1.2 million, five, 54th, anyway, whatever that number is, for 30 years, it's an annual payment. But we do, what we don't have is the impact that it has on the total debt.
And I guess the other thing, it kind of gets back to some of what you were just saying about transportation. I know that's a huge issue to, if at all possible, if, again, I know you may not have all the details worked out, but to try to see what some of these bus route schedules would be like, and, you know, like, for example, the bus that goes by my house that my kids would ride is Bus 90, and I know, you know, what time of the day does that start, what time does it get it to school? Those kind of things.
Absolutely.
And just so that I think people can understand, you know, how that might impact them. I know you've mentioned, you know, it's 10, 15 minutes potentially added on, but I mean, I think if they see the bus route will start, and then here's what time it end at the school, might help, might not.
Sure. Mr. Hartley, we're actually working on that because if you look at research, research says that older students should start school later in the day and younger students should start earlier, just because of the way their bodies are wired. We have that backwards in the city of Bristol, and we're currently studying making a change to that. And so instead of our high schools starting at, you know, pre-eight o'clock hours, that we may move our elementary schools to the early start time and our high schools to the late start time, which would also then have a big impact on the times those buses run. But yes, absolutely, that's something that we're looking at. One of the questions that we don't know the answer to is currently one of our longest lines at the end of the day is at Stonewall Jackson. For whatever reason, we have parents line up there more so than any other elementary school. However, I'm not so sure that those, the same number of car riders will be providing car transportation if we move the school to Van Pelt. So that's something that we're going to have to investigate, and I don't know how we can get an accurate answer to that until we find out the group of students that will be transporting. We can guesstimate based on the families that are attending there now, but as you know, with our transit rate across the city, that's certainly hard to tell. That will also be a benefit that we've not mentioned. We have, you would not believe, because of families being evicted or families changing homes, how often we have students move from the Stonewall Jackson area to the Van Pelt area. And by having one centrally-located primary school, centrally-located intermediate school, centrally-located middle school, and centrally-located high school, those students will not miss a beat of instruction, even if their home-life situation changes. One other thing about transportation, we will be working with City Transit to add the Van Pelt school to the list of stops. You know, they're stopping at The Falls and Walmart and Sugar Hollow already. We would work with City Transit to make that a normal stop. And I'll tell you, our transportation department, if you see buses going through the middle of the day, if you see our division cars driving through the middle of the day, it's because we are transporting students or parents to the meetings that they need to do. Our school division is well-renowned for making those types of issues non-issues for our students and families.
One issue, and this may be for you, this may be for the city manager, I don't know who wants to pick up the slack, but one thing has been mentioned is what about like a PTA meeting starts at 6:00? These children, their parents want to get up there, the city bus might get them up there, but it's not going to get them home. So, you know, is, what would the cost, I mean, one, would the school buses pick up some of the transportation for those type meetings, and/or is that something the city might could extend the bus routes an hour or so?
We would pick up all of the transportation for those types of meetings. As a matter of fact, the Bearcat bandwagon is a prime example of that. We hold a Bearcat bandwagon in every community that we have in the city at different home games throughout. And then, so we, at that time, we provide free meals for all families who attend. We provide free transportation from their community school to the high school, and then we provide free admission into the game. And that's something that we are already doing. A couple of other examples, Washington Lee took their registration this summer to the community center at Rice Terrace Housing Project. And last week, Highland View took parent-teacher conferences to the community center at Johnson's Court. The things that are concerns about what, how we would provide access to our parents and families if we move the school, we're already doing when we have community schools. That will not be a big change for us. It'll just be a change of the dynamics and the specifics.
I got a couple of other things that came to mind, and I just, I've been kind of open about this, I think, in most meetings, but I'll say one more time. You know, I'm lukewarm about the whole new school thing.
Sure.
I'm not, I'm not a strong for, and I'm not a strong against. I'm lukewarm on it. And I'm lukewarm for a couple of reasons. One, I think the timing is an issue.
Sure.
I think the timing of where we are with, as a city, our financial position is not where it needs to be to take on a project like a school. To go and do a PPA, to me, my analogy is it's kind of like going out and getting a zero-interest loan or leasing a house for 30, 35, 40 years or whatever, and I would never do that. So I just have a fundamental problem with, you know, going and just trying to do something that's significant in dollar terms to where you can't put a down payment, you can't do upfront today's dollars and try to, so that's why, that's why the, well, hang on, that's why the timing, that's why I have trouble with the timing.
Sure, I do get that.
I'd rather be in a position to do that where we, where we put a significant amount of money down, we construct it right. And I think the long-term construction standards is another concern.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I know firsthand, building several facilities, you know, industrial-type facilities, they're not what they used to be. So I'm concerned that we wake up, you know, 30 years from now, and all of a sudden, it's a school that really didn't get us anything except the lease payment for that length of time, and we gotta build another school. That's a legitimate concern.
Absolutely. The answer to that question is they, it's a 50-year, not guaranteed, but a 50-year recommended lifespan for using the quality of materials that they plan to use for this building.
But recommended and what you actually get is two different, two different things.
I will tell you, that was not the highest proposal that we received. We did receive one that had a much lower lifespan recommendation.
So I think a referendum, you know, has been brought up. Would you be open to a referendum vote in the city if the city manager could pull it off logistically with the state in the election cycles?
It couldn't happen with this cycle because the deadline to add something to the agenda has already.
No, I said if, if we could pull it off logistically.
Right, yeah, absolutely. We're not, we're certainly not afraid of a referendum. I'll tell you the issue with that, and the members who have been to the public hearings at this point, the opportunity cost to put this off an additional year are anywhere from $8 to $12 million based on today's rates. I mean, there's a significant, there'll be a significant increase in the total cost if the, if this project is put off by one year. if the, if this project is put off by one year.
Yeah, I understand that. And there's risk both ways, up and down, right?
Absolutely.
So you could wake up in the finances of the other direction, you just never know what the future holds. But if you're open to a referendum, I think there's certain projects that the city gets faced with that are huge financial obligations. The schools, one, there should have been a referendum for the Falls, to be honest with you. That was a huge obligation. So I'm asking, because maybe this is a time where we need to take a deep breath and really think about that, because we didn't do the city right the last time we had a big financial thing in front of us. And I don't think we want to wake up and say, we should have done it this time, too, right?
I would say we also don't want to wake up and have to do something with our schools, and we haven't had the foresight and the long-term thinking to have done it already. But I'm absolutely.
Well, I think we all agree you need a new school.
Right.
I think we know that the days of Highland View are, I mean, we're living on bar time, so to speak. We get that.
And so, but I will tell you, the school board is not, not afraid at all of a referendum. I think that school folks show up when it comes election time. I mean, that's, and that's certainly not anything at all that we would, we would be concerned about.
And I think the last thing, and I've talked to a couple of teachers and school people in, you know, just in confidence, right?
Sure.
Because they're in a, they're in a predicament, right? They, they're not going to be the ones to kind of come out and come up against something like that in a public domain, because, you know, they're hired and that's their job, right? So, so there's a lot that I've talked to, they're not for this, for valid reasons. So I would, I would want to know, are you open to kind of an anonymous survey of the employees of the school system, just to see how the school system employee base really thinks about this anonymously? You could set it up web-based, where it's, you know, third-party administered, and, you know, they don't know who you are, and it's a couple, three questions, and the teachers get in there and administrators, and they get to answer a couple, three, to see what everybody thinks, and then we.
So I think that would, we would certainly be open to that. I think it would have to be carefully calculated, because there are a lot of issues that surround this, location being one of them. You've mentioned already that there is definitely, no, nobody has questioned the need for a new school. That's, I don't think that anybody can question that fact, and if you do, please go to our schools. But however, if you, if location is the issue, there's no answer for that. And so if people are opposed to the new school because of the location, my question is, show us a veteran. And there's just not one available.
But I just think in the interest of doing the, doing the right thing, doing the right thing for the community, I think you need to talk to the school board. It's not our position to say what you can and can't do, because we're not in charge of the school system, but I think you should talk to them seriously about a referendum consideration. I think you should talk to them about an anonymous teacher-administrator-type survey to see if you guys could pull that off somehow.
And I'm certainly not against either of those. I think the second one would have to be, you'd have to be well-thought-out and very well-crafted, because there's a lot of issues that could affect, impact the decision that we may or may not have any control over. But I will tell you that we have multiple committees. We have a Van Pelt renovation committee, and we also have a PPA committee that is very well-represented by teachers, by the BVEA organization, which is, we have a representative from BVEA on both of those committees who bring to us the concerns of the BVA group. So I think that we have a pretty good feel. We may have a pocket here or there of teachers who may not like it because of the impact it'll have on them personally, but overall, I think we have the support of our staff.
And the last thing, do you have a quoted cash buy? If we had the cash, you could write a check tomorrow, what the cost would be to build a new school?
We do. The eighteen point five million dollars.
Okay.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna chime in here, because I made this recommendation a while back in a meeting with you, that I would like to see it on, on the ballot and see what the community has to say about it. And this is an election cycle. The machines will be set up in November. So I wouldn't think that it would be too much of an issue to get this on a ballot.
Well, we've got a couple of issues in regards to a referendum in the city. One, our city charter doesn't allow it. Two, I think timing in regards to state board of elections, getting it on the ballot is an issue, because literally we're six weeks out from an election, and if I'm not mistaken, those things have to be in at least ninety days, if not longer, before an election.
Okay. And you could still have a special election, though, right?
There's nothing that would, I mean, it would cost the city some money, but it's something that would be a small bit of change compared to.
The size of the project.
Right. I would tell you that a special election would not be necessary, because if you decide to put this issue off, November is the drop-dead date for this to happen, because we, if we don't make a decision in November, there's, we really, there's no need to make it a decision in a hurry, because if we don't start in November, the school won't open in August of 2020. And because of the way that we're generating savings through the closing of schools, we can't have an October opening for this school. I mean, it has to open in August. If it doesn't open in August, it can't open until the following August. So if, if this, it will take a courageous decision on part of city council to make this happen. I certainly do that. And if the wherewithal is not there for city council to make that decision in November, then there will be, it will have to be postponed, which means there will be somewhere between an eight million dollar to a twelve million dollar. That, that's where the cost to the citizens of the city will come in.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, on to item two. Consider a public hearing regarding an ordinance to vacate all of a certain public right-of-way in the city of Bristol Euclid Avenue Baptist Church. Yes, there'll be, there's public comment here.
Shall I come up?
No, I wrote the second. We gotta open the hearing first. We got an order we gotta go through.
This is on the number one.
Oh, number one? Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. You're up. Number one, I'm sorry, you're up. I thought you meant number two.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I am Nancy Marney. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner, a taxpayer, I vote, and I care. I'm also a product of the Bristol, Virginia public school system. I think one of the main things that needs to be done on this issue of building a public school is to put this in the proper context. And to begin with that context is this, we are a very small community. We have approximately seventeen thousand people and falling. We also have a very small school system of approximately twenty-two hundred students and falling. It may have leveled off a little bit right now. I remember when it was thirty-six hundred and the population was over nineteen thousand. We're going down, not up. I think that is the context, number one. Number two, we are a very low-income community. I mean, you can't even argue that. We're a low-income community. We have about sixty to sixty-one percent of the household income, thirty thousand dollars a year or less, or less. We have about fifty-two percent, twenty thousand dollars a year or less. That's household income. That means that if there's six people living within that house, they're all bringing in that amount of money. And then it goes on. I could go on with the figures, but that's enough to make my point. Now, there is such a thing as being financially irresponsible. There's a lot of that around, you know? I understand, I could phrase this as a question or make a statement. I think in the interest of time, I'll make a statement. If a new school is built, there will be classrooms, and there will be furniture in these classrooms. I will ask the superintendent, please, to verify that is true.
Yes, ma'am. That is the manager's statement.
Thank you, thank you. So we know that's a true statement. Now, there's another true statement. We already have that. We've already got it. We've got classrooms, we've got furniture. All of the schools we have right now are paid for. There's no debt. That's another factor. Now, I have not yet seen any estimates on what it would take to make the improvements to any of the, of the existing schools. I haven't seen those figures. In time past, I have asked for the figures, but I, I've never pressed for them, but I have asked for them, I have not received them. If handicapped access is the only problem, put an elevator in. What are you talking about? A hundred thousand dollars? Well, put it in. Just one or two here, and then I know, I know. I wonder about, I went to Oak Street School a long time ago. I started a year early, and that was the only seat there, and it was on a corner. That was my seat on a corner. You'd be put in jail today, but the school's still there. I went to Jefferson School. It's still there, being used. It's old, so is my house, it's being lived in. Now, I don't know what it would cost for renovation, but let me close with this point. The schools we have as I speak are paid for. They have rooms, they have furniture, heat, light, water, they're warm in the winter, cool in the summer. All of the utilities are in. The telephones are in. The roads, the whole road structure of the city is in place. It's all there. When each school was built, a community grew up around that school, and it is still valid, it is still there, and it is still in use. This is part of the reality of this situation. The structures are already there. Now, if improvements need to be made, make them. If four schools need an elevator, put in an elevator. Now, we're up to maybe a half million dollars or less.
Thank you, Ms. Marney. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, now we're on to item two. Consider a public hearing regarding the ordinance to vacate all of a certain right-of-way in the city of Bristol Euclid Avenue Baptist Church. I hereby open the hearing. Staff comment.
I'm John Puckett. I work for Joseph Daff, city engineer. Representatives from the Euclid Avenue Baptist Church presented a petition to vacate the remaining portion of right-of-way, which is the yellow area on the, on the area. Put all the appropriate documents together and should have in your packet. We did have a declaration of understanding and a petition to vacate the right-of-way. It appears that, you know, the Wagner Alley and the alley that used to be right from Fairmont Avenue was, Fairmont Avenue was vacated years ago, and this remaining portion is all that's left. And I, I put all the documentation together and sent it to the utilities, city people, fire, police, and did not receive any objections. So I moved it, it'd be vacated.
Anything else, Randy?
I would say that this was properly advertised on September 10th, September 17th for the Bristol Herald-Cooyer, as required by statute. I reviewed this in the packet, and I see no issue with this vacating the right-of-way.
Okay, we're on to public comment now, so we do have, I think, one person signed up. Northland? Jackie? Two C, is that?
No, I didn't sign up.
No, it says Jackie, you signed up.
I already agreed.
Okay, all right. Didn't look like anybody signed up for two. So I hereby close the hearing. All right, on to item three. Consider a first reading of an ordinance to vacate all of a certain right-of-way of the city of Bristol Euclid Avenue Baptist Church. Staff report, any, anything else?
The only thing that I would add is, this has to be done by city ordinance pursuant to Virginia Code 15.2 hyphen 2006, and ordinance is attached in your packet for you to review.
All right, no one's signed up for public comment on this item. Do I have a motion to second by council?
A move to approve, second.
Okay, a motion, Mr. Wingard, to approve, second, Mr. Osborne. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Moonpower.
Yes. Please read the ordinance.
Ordinance to vacate a portion of an improved public right-of-way of Wagner Alley, whereas the city of Bristol, Virginia desires to vacate a portion of a right-of-way of Wagner Alley in the city of Bristol, Virginia, more particularly described as follows. Beginning at a point on the northeasterly right-of-way of Pearl Street, being the southwesterly corner of tax parcel number twenty-six hyphen four hyphen twenty-five hyphen fourteen, thence leaving said right-of-way of Pearl Street in a northeasterly direction with the property lines of tax parcels numbers twenty-six hyphen four hyphen twenty-five hyphen fourteen, twenty-six hyphen four hyphen twenty-five hyphen thirteen, twenty-six hyphen four hyphen twenty-five hyphen twelve, and twenty-six hyphen four hyphen twenty-five hyphen eleven, to the previously vacated portion of a Wagner Alley. Thence, with said previously vacated portion of Wagner Alley in a southeasterly direction to the line of tax parcel number twenty-six hyphen four hyphen twenty-five hyphen fifteen, thence in a southwesterly direction, continuing the direction of the alley to the Pearl Street right-of-way, and being the northwesterly corner of tax parcel twenty-six hyphen four hyphen twenty-five hyphen fifteen, thence in a northwesterly direction with the right-of-way of Pearl Street to the point of a beginning, and being all of the remaining unvacated right-of-way of Wagner Alley between Pearl Street and Park Street. Whereas the vacated said right-of-way has been advertised in a public hearing held, all in compliance with Section 15.2 hyphen 2006 of the 1950 Code of Virginia as amended. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council for the city of Bristol, Virginia, that the right-of-way in the city of Bristol, Virginia described above should be and hereby is vacated, and be it further ordained that the clerk of the city shall cause a certified copy of this ordinance to be recorded among the land records in the office of the circuit court for the city of Bristol, Virginia, as required by law.
All right, on to item four. Consider first reading of ordinance to approve zoning map amendment, application oh-one dash twenty-eighteen to rezone tax map one-nine-zero dash four dash one, a five-point-four acre portion of the former tax map, one-nine-zero dash A dash six A, from R1, single-family residential, to B3, intermediate business. Staff report.
Council, I probably should have said this during city manager comments, but due to the excitement surrounding Gorma Pharmaceuticals, I neglected to, Sally Morgan would normally be here for this, but she is on her way back, her embark pod from Washington DC, where they did win a national award for the State Street Development Project, working in conjunction with Bristol, Tennessee. I believe there will be a celebration on October the sixteenth on State Street to celebrate that winning of that national award. I think there were, I can't remember the number of cities and towns that were vying for that award, but Bristol came out on top, so today's been a real good day for Bristol. In regards to this item, an application was received on August the ninth for a zoning map amendment to rezone five-point-four acres owned by Clarence Dishman and located on Stage Coach Road from R1, which is single-family residential, to B3, which is intermediate business. The property owner applicant desires to sell the subject property for commercial development due to its proximity to the interstate. No development plans exist for the property at this time. As required by the Code of Virginia, a joint public hearing of the Planning Commission and the city council was held on September the eleventh. The hearing was properly advertised on August twenty-seventh and September third, issues of the Bristol Herald-Cooyer, and notices were sent to all adjoining property owners by certified mail in accordance with the Virginia Code, Section 15.2 hyphen 2004. The property was posted with a sign displaying the public hearing date. The Planning Commission voted at its regular meeting on September seventeenth to recommend the zoning map amendment to the city council. Because a zoning map amendment is a change of the city code, it requires that an ordinance be adopted by the city council. There was previous relevant action on this item. On July the sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, the Planning Commission approved the division of five-point-four acres from the original thirty-eight acres of the Dishman property. August fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, city council approved the division of the five-point-four acre tract, and the plat was recorded on August the twenty-third of two thousand and eighteen. On August the twentieth of two thousand and eighteen, the Planning Commission voted for the application to the city council for a joint public hearing. On September the eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, the joint public hearing was held to hear comments on the application. And then on September the seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning Commission voted five-o, with two members absent, to recommend the rezoning application to the city council. We would recommend the approval of the zoning map amendment number zero-one hyphen two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. We got one person signed up, Ms. Marney, on item four.
I'll next.
All right, with that, need a council motion, a second?
I move to approve the zoning on the Dishman property. Second.
Okay, got a motion of Mr. Wingard, second, Mr. Osborne. Any discussion?
Just, does that motion, since the ordinance is fairly long, does, are you gonna read the? the entire ordinance, or?
I think there's been, it has been made publicly available on the internet since Friday. Um, copies are available if anyone in the public desires to have it, so I think we could do this by caption only.
By caption only?
Okay, so I got a motion by caption only?
Second.
Second by Mr. Osborne. Any other discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mum Power?
Yes.
Am I reading by caption only?
An ordinance by the city council of Bristol, Virginia approving the request by Clarence Dishman to amend the city zoning map from single-family residential R-one to intermediate business B-three for property described as map parcel number one-nine-zero hyphen four hyphen one, a five-point-four acre pro- portion of former map parcel number one-nine-zero hyphen A hyphen six A located on Stagecoach Road.
All right. All right, next item, item five. Consider letter of support for the Southwest Virginia EMS Council. Staff report.
The Southwest Virginia EMS Council is seeking to renew its designation as a regional emergency medical services council pursuant to sections thirty-two point one hyphen twelve, thirty-two point one hyphen one-hundred-and-eleven point four, thirty-two point one hyphen one-hundred-and-eleven point eleven of the Code of Virginia, and chapter thirty-one, sections twenty-three-hundred to twenty-three-eighty of the Virginia Emergency Medical Services Regulation. They have requested a letter supporting their application, and I would recommend approval of that letter.
Okay. Counsel's motion on this, um, letter of support.
I move to approve. Second.
Second, Mr. Wingard. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mum Power?
Yes.
And I'll go ahead and read it. "Dated September twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, Southwest Virginia EMS Council, attention Gregory Woods, three oh-six Piedmont Avenue, Bristol, Virginia. Dear Mr. Woods, Bristol, Virginia City Council has been informed that the Southwest Virginia EMS Council is applying to renew its designation as a regional emergency medical services council pursuant to sections thirty-two dot one dash twelve, thirty-two dot one dash one-one-one point four, and thirty-two dot one dash one-one point one-one of Code of Virginia, and chapter thirty-one, sections twenty-three-hundred, twenty-three-eighty of the Virginia Emergency Medical Services Regulations. I understand that the goal of this process is to obtain continued authorization to operate and provide the services of a designated regional EMS council. The Southwest Virginia EMS Council has served as a regional emergency medical services council since its inception in nineteen seventy-nine. The organization has been instrumental in planning, coordinating, and improving the regional EMS delivery system. The organization provides valuable services to EMS stakeholders in our region, including EMS system planning, coordination, and training, and the council board directors includes representation from all six jurisdictions in their proposed service area in Southwest Virginia. The city of Bristol is familiar with the Southwest Virginia EMS Council's work to reduce death and disability resulting from medical and traumatic emergencies in Southwest Virginia, and to support the various components of the regional EMS system. For that reason, we offer support of their designation application. We look forward to continuing our work with the Southwest Virginia EMS Council, as well as our other community partners, to ensure the health and safety of our citizens. If you have any questions, please contact the office of the city manager, two-seven-six six-four-five-seven-three-three-three. Sincerely, Kevin Mum Power." All right. On to the next, um, next item was tabled, item six. So do we need, uh, a vote to table item six? We voted on that to begin, we don't need another vote, right? We, we tabled item seven, and then we're on to item eight. Consider approval of amended minutes.
I completed an audit of, um, all of the fiscal year eighteen council minutes, um, just to make sure we had all of the general information captured appropriately, um, and I also went and made sure that we had all of those available on the website. Um, I did find errors in four of those meetings, March fifteenth, May the twenty-second, June the twelfth, and June the twenty-sixth. Um, and we also learned that the proper motion for amending the minutes was to include it on the agenda as an item, not as, um, an item on the consent agenda. Um, and after publishing the packet, I did have a couple of other small errors pointed out to me, one by Mr. Osborne, um, that is on the June twelfth minutes. We have Mr. Hartley voting twice on, uh, the budget ordinance, so I've made that correction. And then on the June twenty-sixth meeting, at the very beginning of the meeting, um, I did add that, um, Mr. Flainer, uh, left the meeting. So I did make those two changes, and would ask that you include that in your motion.
Okay. On this motion, do we, can we just say in general amended minutes, or we have to specifically state the dates of each, uh?
Now, we just approve the amended minutes, and then make the changes, uh, those two last changes, which includes a change for Mr. Hartley voting twice on June twelfth, and that Mr. Flainer left the, uh, the meeting early in June twenty-sixth.
Okay. All right, so with that, do I have a motion to approve the amended minutes as, uh, as described?
I move that we make, approve the amended minutes as presented.
All right, got a motion, Mr. Hartley?
Second.
Second, Mr. Wingard. Any discussion?
I was just gonna tell y'all ahead of time, since I wasn't here at any of these, and I wasn't a member, I'm abstaining, so.
That was noted, I think, in the minutes when you read them, but, uh-
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Abstain.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mum Power?
Yes.
All right, item nine was tabled, which includes nine-one. Now we're on to the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of council on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, got a motion of Mr. Wingard to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hartley. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mum Power?
Yes.
All right, with that, I think, uh, we can adjourn. You're by adjourn.